Good evening, it is 6:30. We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Hala, if you could lead us in our invocation, please, sir. Right, that takes us to item number three for agenda approval. If everything's good, we'll do that wonderful motion.
One quick moment. Just to forewarn, when the consent agenda comes off, we'll be moving a few things off the consent agenda, but the current order of the agenda seems to be in order, and I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda approval is good. Alright. Rules of decorum, I think we go over this quite often. We're just be respectful, I think at the end of the day is all it's about, to one another, and the dice will be respectful back. That takes us to citizens' comments, and first up is Mr. Mark Kipit.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mark Kipit, 31 Fireside Drive. I just want to say thank you to the fire department. My wife came back from Austin. You had two males in the car with her. Where's Dennis? Flat tire over on Connie Lane, and we couldn't cope with it. Fire department showed up and saved us, and it just shows the benefits of living in a small city with a hometown atmosphere, so thank you. Hard, but more importantly, a check in the card for the fire department. That's my only request, that that money be used by the members of the department however they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipit. Chief, you can endorse that to the city? Just kidding. Tom, you're up, next, sir.
Tom Ritz, 1305 Somerset in Kingsbridge. I have been having longstanding disagreement with Infomark, which, you know, way back in February, they came here and said they're going to do better. Well, they haven't, and, but, it finally got resolved. Beverly, thank you very much. I brought my dispute and explained it, and I got the notice, a look into it. Less than 24 hours later, when I came to pick up my cane that I had left here, she said, "Cool, it's fine, it's over and done with," and I really appreciate it.
Hey, checks, flowers, man, what's next? Sherry London, you gotta top all that. Check and flowers, you're up next.
Sherry London, 216 Harvest Ridge. I'm here to talk about agenda items 7.1 and 7.3, where the city council thinks it can slap a franchise fee on private water utilities. Now, I love to tell you exactly what's in those ordinances, but funny thing, they weren't even attached the agenda for public review, so I can't really do that, but let's clear something up. In Texas, municipalities can only impose franchise fees where the state says they can. That means electric utilities, Texas Utilities Code 33.008, and cable and video providers, Texas Utilities 66.005. You know what's not on that list? Private water utilities. There is no law on the books giving cities that power that I could find. Texas Water Code 13.081 says fees can only be charged if there's an existing agreement, but it does not let the city create one out of thin air. And while Texas Local Government Code 552.001 gives cities regulatory authority, it does not allow for franchise fees on private water providers. Now, some cities like Tyler charge their own municipally-owned utilities a fee, but that's an entirely different ballgame. This doesn't apply to private companies. And hey, if we were a home rule city, we might take a crack at it, since it's not explicitly prohibited. But A, it would still face legal challenges, the city of El Paso lost their battle on the same issue, by the way, and of course, B, we're not a home rule city yet. But here's the kicker. Even if the Texas Legislature decided tomorrow, the cities could impose these fees, the law still says they're tied to public rights of way maintained by the city. And guess what? My water provider never touches a single city-maintained road to reach my property. They use State Highway 205, FM 549, and FM 1139, all outside the city's jurisdiction. Since the city maintains or owns very few streets, that means any franchise agreement negotiated would only apply to properties reached via those streets. So let's call it what it is. It's a money grab. The city has no statutory authority to do this, and they sure as heck don't have my consent or the consent of the private water utilities or their customers. I believe these ordinances are legally baseless, unjustified, and should be rescinded immediately. And if you won't do it, our incoming city council will. But if you want to maintain even a shred of credibility with the people in this town, you'll do the right thing before you leave office in May. It's time to walk those ordinances back before you spark yet another legal battle where I get to pay the legal bills for both sides. Enough already.
Thank you, Sherry. Next up is Dennis London.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Dennis London, 216 Harvest Ridge Drive. As many of you know, I've been actively fighting the battle down in Austin against Austin's overreach to ensure local city governance and, as well as county government, maintain control. But what's deeply concerning is that while I'm fighting to protect local authority and the control that you have, I have to come here sometimes to fight against council members who seem determined to abuse the very power that I'm working to preserve. It's almost as if you don't appreciate the authority that's been granted to you through the enumerated powers, authority that Austin would absolutely love to take back in a heartbeat. Thankfully, we have a city charter on the ballot, giving our residents the chance to establish our own standards, laws, and regulations, but let's be clear. The threat of state interference is real, and the more reckless decisions that are made here, the easier it becomes for Austin to justify stepping in. So I have one request. Let's just stop the insanity. Let's focus on making McLendon Chism the best city that it can be. Not a battleground for power struggles or bad governance or what have you. Austin can keep being weird, that is their slogan, keep Austin weird. Let's not do that here. Let's be smart. And before I close, I do want to take a moment to recognize the outgoing council members. While I may not have agreed with many of you on decisions, I still respect the fact that you stepped up to serve. Public service isn't easy. It's often thankless, and it takes time away from your families and personal lives. And for that, you deserve recognition, and I truly do want to say thank you. In a city of 7,200 people and a county of 132,000, we're all still neighbors. We will see each other around town. We'll find each other at restaurants, or at gas stations, or at a community event. And we may have disagreed, sometimes strongly, but we should still be able to maintain the basic courtesies as adults who share and live in the same community. Thank you all, God bless.
Thank you, Dennis. As always, is there any others that want to do citizens' comments before I close it? Nope, so it's 6:40, and we will close public comments. That takes us to consent agenda. We have 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5 up for consent. I will accept a motion to approve that unless anyone sees anything they would like to take off to discuss.
I'd like to remove item 6.2, 6.3, and 6.5 for discussion, and leave 6.1 and 6.4 on for approval.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, show that unanimously, so we will do 6.2 first.
We now have to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
Yeah, we just did that with 6.2.
Oh, and you're doing that same motion, okay.
Yeah, same motion, we're approving 6.1 and 6.4, so that brings us to 6.2. Being that that was on consent, does that need to be read still? Hala, does that need to be read still? So we pulled three items off of consent. The items that we pulled, do they need to be read in its entirety? Very good. Angela, 6.2 then.
Consider approving and ordinance amending Chapter 8 offenses and nuances of the City of McLendon Chism Code of ordinances by adding Article 8.09, Dangerous Buildings and Other Structures, enacting regulations with respect to substandard, unsecured, and dangerous buildings or structures, specifying the remedies available to the city to obtain compliance with those regulations, authorizing the city to take certain actions to remedy violations, and providing methods by which it can remove its expenses in doing so, enacting civil and criminal penalties for violation of the regulations, providing for a savings and severability clause, providing for a repealing clause, and providing for an effective date.
Alright, since you wanted to discuss that, Paul, what do you want to discuss?
Actually, it's been presented by Beth Stevens, and I'd like for her to give a quick presentation. I don't, I mean, just an explanation for what's going on, what the changes are, and what the genesis of this ordinance is.
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, this adoption of this amendment to Chapter 8 was requested by Mark Woodruff, our code enforcement officer. We have a property here in town that he has worked with the owners for a very long time to try to get it removed or repaired. We have pictures that he took today to show you. The one on the left is a barn on the back of the property. The one on the right is, I believe it's the house, and then there are two more. This is our V that is on the property, and another, a second barn. He has worked with this owner over and over and over again to try to get something done. Unfortunately, our offenses and nuisance ordinance did not have a clause to remove this property without the owner doing it themselves. The others that he had been able to remove in the city, the owners cooperated and took care of bringing down. This one is an extreme hazard. It is right on Highway 205, and if you will allow me, I will share the funniest story about this property I think I have ever heard in my life. He asked the owners, they said they had a pest problem, and he asked the owners how they were dealing with the pest problem, and they said, "Well, we leave the doors open. We let the snakes come in and eat the rats. When the snakes are full and they leave, we shut the doors." So we all had a little chuckle on that one. But it's, the amendment to the ordinance that was written by Mr. Hala for us will allow us to do something with this property in absence of the owner taking care of it themselves.
And in which way does the old ordinance been altered? Because I didn't have the chance to review a red line on this, and maybe Mr. Hala can give some information on that.
It now lets us do everything in the ordinance. We couldn't do it before. We couldn't take substandard structures and do anything with them, and Beth was just giving, or excuse me, City Administrator was just giving an example of why we need an ordinance like this. This ordinance was not created to deal with this particular situation, so I don't want anybody to think that. But that just said, "Hey, you know what, we got a problem here in the future. We may have another problem come up. Let's figure out a way to handle it." So there was nothing in our nuisance ordinance that let us deal with this, any substandard dilapidated structures.
So by amending this ordinance, you actually put some teeth into it, and there's an enforcement capability, and to what degree is that enforcement?
Well, we didn't have anything, we didn't even really address this in the ordinance before.
So what does it allow you to do at this point?
Well, now it allows you to give notice. Okay, so say you've got a, let's say there are all kinds of violations, the IPC, the IBC, the IMPC, the NEC, the IFC, all the codes, the construction codes. Yeah, usually there are multiple violations of more than one code. Okay, so you see that, what happens is, and I can't remember the specifics of what we did, it's like a 10-day certified letter, you send them and say, "Hey, look, this your notice of violation. You're not getting a ticket, nobody's doing anything yet. You got 30 days or 14 days or whatever to remedy the violation. Here specifically, the violations that you have." And you list out all those different things and all those different portions, usually it's multiple violations of multiple codes, okay? You list all those things out, and usually they're pretty long letters. You send it to the property owner. They have X amount of time for them to do anything. Now, at the end of that time period, let's say nothing's done, or minimal work has been done, but still, building official has determined, voted for, you're really new building official, has determined that, "Hey, you know what, this is a dilapidated structure. It is a danger to the health, safety, welfare of the community. It is not fit for humans to have it." Okay, so once you have that, and that's who sends the first letter, by the way, is the building official. Once you have that, and they don't meet it, then you got a couple of times, then you go to enforcement, or you can go issue a ticket, and you process it through the municipal court, if you want to do that. The other option that we have is, "Hey, you know what, now you're going to go before the Board of Adjustments. We're not going to go the route with sending you citations to municipal court." Now you go for the Board of Adjustments. At that hearing, it's actual public hearing, the building official shows up, gives evidence via testimony with pictures of why they're saying, "Here are the violations, here's what they are," and gives a recommendation. "I think they can rehab it in 30 days. I think this, I think it should be torn down." Whatever it is, building official's recommendation. At the conclusion of that, and then the property owner will be notified. They're pretty stringent, and I mean, within reason. We don't have to go down and do some forensic analysis through title work of, you know, what we showed to track down any possible error of the property, but you have to look in there and say, "Hey, look, have we made a check to see who any errors are, notify them?" It's not surprising, a lot of times this happens with a deceased property owner, so you want to find out, make sure everybody has notice. So there's steps in there that are reasonable, that we can take, that don't tax our staff, you know, unreasonably, okay? So we do that. They have a right, if they show up, they have a right to put up any testimony, any evidence to the contrary, whatever they want to say, they get the right to do that. Once all of that is concluded, the Board of Adjustments will then- Once all of that is concluded, the Board of Adjustments will then make an order. They will create an order and it is, hey, you know what? This is our order. This thing, we believe the testimony of the building official. We think this is a danger to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness for the citizens. And you know what? This piece of junk needs to be torn down. And you got, they have 30 days to remove it on their own dime, or we can go in there on day 31, we can go have it removed, tear it down, and put a lien on the property for the cost of us having to do that. And then if they want to appeal it, guess what? There's no appeal at that point. The only thing they can do is file a lawsuit in district court, asking the court to vacate the judgment of the Board of Adjustments.
Mayor, can I add something to that? Mark's been working on this project for about a year and a half, almost two years. We had four buildings inside the city that were in similar condition and we were able to get compliance from the homeowners to remove them. This one here has been an ongoing process. I do know with this case here that they have another house in another county that has been condemned. So they have several properties like this to where they're to the point where it's a fire hazard, a cell hazard, you name it, a safety hazard. So just to let you know that this isn't just something new. We just now needed some more inside this ordinance that gives the city the authority of Mark to be able to pursue. Now saying, we've worked with you for a year and a half, two years. We spend enough time and energy and money on issuing citations or writing warnings. Now the cloud, take the step to get resolved.
Let me stress real fast. We did not do this ordinance because of these people. Absolutely not. They were simply one of several people that we realized, hey, we've got an issue and we need to address it. These people just have to be the ones that might or might not, depends, I don't know, might or might not be affected by the ordinance. But we did not, we're not targeting these people, we're not coming after, we didn't create this ordinance because we've got to go tear the Harris house down. That is not why we did this. We've got issues, we've got problems, and, you know, these may be the source of the thumbs, but we did it because we realized we may have an issue and we want to set ourselves up for the future and make sure we take care of those.
I actually had a conversation with Mark some time ago. I think it was probably eight months to a year ago. And we spoke to the point of several buildings like this that were existing in the city's perimeter and that they were threatening to, you know, say, health and welfare of the folks and that we need to do something. But apparently, apparently, and I had never known, that we didn't have any enforcement capability, but I, you know, I welcome, first of all, Dave bringing this up to highlight this as a point, and then you following through with it to make sure that in the future, because I've seen some other structures around that are getting to this point, that we'll have be able to enforce something that along the lines of, and at the level of the BOA is great that you don't have to go to court in order to pursue it and expend tons of money for a negligent homeowner. Thanks.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure something out here. Is my understanding, let's use this particular example here. My assumption is they're in this position because they don't have any money. Is that not known or is that known? We're taking poor people and putting them in worse situations. And what I'm saying is, if I see a building like that and I look over at the chief, I could say, could you guys do a test fire on that? Burn that thing down? Why not?
Absolutely not. TCQ does not allow us to do that anymore. In order for us to use a structure for fire training, we have to go in and gut it. Shingles, then we have to worry about asbestos, we have to pull plumbing. Those structures we can no longer use. It's almost impossible to get a permit to do that type of live fire training now.
Because if you put this type of financial burden on poor people, they're going to lose the property. They're just going to lose it.
And we don't, we have no clue if they're poor or rich. We have no clue. That's not what we look at here. This is, like I said, we've had four structures, Blue Building down at 205 in League, one at 205 across the street from here, one down here at the corner of 550 and Smith. We were able to gain compliance with those homeowners. So this is just one of those other cases that he's been working on for a long time. We have no clue if they've got money or don't have money. We don't.
So there's no way to really put a win-win into this?
And the goal, again, always, even with this, with Mr. Holla putting this in and Mark now having this ordinance in place, our goal is still to gain compliance. We work with people to make sure that we gain compliance. We're not trying to put any more burden on them whatsoever. That's not our goal. This is just an ordinance that needs to be worked on for a while.
And I don't want to focus too much on this specific incident because I'm concerned that people will think the ordinance was passed just to target these people.
We have others.
Too much, yeah, too much time. But in general, the way the ordinance works is, as the chief said, he's absolutely right and I am fully behind that. The whole thing about code violations is, you're looking for compliance.
That's it.
What can we do to help the property owner come into compliance with the ordinances that we have? That's why the letter, there's so much notice involved, it doesn't even count. It doesn't, it doesn't say that Mark can't talk to them for, I don't know, 45 days and exchange emails and send them another letter. Doesn't say he can't do that. Okay? See, from what I know, my working with Mark, he does spend a lot of time working with people. This is just, when he finally, whatever he decides, when he reaches the point with any property owner in a situation that we're talking about for the ordinance, then we've got to follow the procedure outlined in the ordinance. Once, whatever he takes to get to that point, that's Mark. Okay? Once he gets to that point, then we've got rules and procedures in place to protect the property owner, but also to protect the city.
And this is standard language that's used in other municipalities for the same purpose?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Show that unanimous, Angela. And then when you are ready, 6.3 is next.
Consider approving an ordinance of the City of McLendon Chisholm, Texas, amending Section 3.01.001 of Article 3.01 of Chapter 3, building regulations of the Code of Ordinances by amending the fee schedule, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Beverly, actually, we'll entertain a motion on this one first so we can open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to consider approving an ordinance. The City of McLendon Chisholm, Texas, amending Section 3.01.001, Article 3.01, et cetera.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Beth.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize. Our finance director, Jeff White, had planned to be here tonight to present this agenda item. His daughter is in the hospital, so please keep her in your prayers. We discovered on our fee schedule that we did not have a fee for a non-sufficient fund check that came back to us. So we were, in lack of other terms, eating those fees. So he has suggested that we add a $35 fee for an NSF payment to our fee schedule.
Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, what is the origination of that or the origin of that number? Is that our cost?
Yes, sir.
Starting, looking through the packet. Oh, sorry. Give me a minute.
And I apologize. It's on the extra paper we handed out to you tonight. We missed a page on the fee schedule when we printed.
And you said the old fee was nothing?
Correct.
No further questions.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Show that one unanimous. Angela, whenever you're ready, we'll go to 6.5, please.
Acknowledge and approve the termination notice from Blackland Water terminating the agreement to supply water to Sonoma Verde Phases 3 and 5.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Beverly.
We received correspondence from Jason McKinney and Scott McConter, denying the agreement or, I think, terminating the agreement. Can't get my words together tonight. Terminating the agreement that we had for them for Sonoma Verde Phases 3 and 5. They asked us to please put it on the agenda and get council to approve it so they can move forward.
Is there any discussion on this item?
The items in question that you're referring to are not in the packet. We don't have the ability to acknowledge what we don't see.
I think what this is, from what I understand, with Scott and Jason, is acknowledging, the key word there, acknowledging, their termination of the notice. There is, there is no supporting document. We are agreeing to them terminating that contract. It's, it allows them to move forward. It also takes them out of the legal battle and allows certain things to start moving forward with ease on their end. So that's where it's at.
The only issue that we have before us though is to acknowledge and approve the termination notice, which is a physically existing thing, which we don't have in the packet. That's the concern we have here. It doesn't, we can't resolve the question in front of us because we don't have the information.
This has been talked about since we're blue in the face. Does anybody want to see the supporting document? That we already know what it is? I'm asking the council, please, Paul, let me hear from them. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, on this, I would prefer to have seen the document because I think what's going to come up in question in part later on with some of my items is that you're going to ask for a document as well. So I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander because we're going to be looking at 7.1. So I would like to have the document presented.
Councilmember Easter, do you want to see the document?
I don't know that I need to see the document, but I think it ought to be included in the record.
Councilmember McLendon.
It needs to be included.
And Councilmember Brewer.
I agree with Councilman Easter.
Somebody. Try it again.
I agree with Councilman Easter.
All right. So many people want to see it, so we will let Blackland know that we will push this to March 11th and we will supply the supporting document. And I guess let them know we're apologetic in that. Brings us to 7.1.
Discuss and consider approval of the franchise fee ordinance between the City of McLendon Chisholm and Blackland WSC upon future delivery of water within McLendon Chisholm city limits.
I'll entertain a motion on this.
Make a motion to discuss and consider approval of franchise fee ordinance between City McLendon Chisholm and Blackland WSC upon future delivery of water within McLendon Chisholm city limits.
I'll second.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, so, and again, my apologies on this, that I didn't provide that, that new ordinance. And I will be postponing this at least for a vote until next time. So I'll have in preparation that ordinance. There was some miscommunication on my part and so I'll take the hit on that. But that being said, we have existing franchise fee ordinances for a number of entities to include a number of utilities across the board and to include RCH and High Point. And so I really wanted to preempt, and I understand that Blackland is not currently providing any kind of water services within the city limits at this point, but they will be with the new Sloan tract at some point in time. So with this, I wanted to get an ordinance in play that effectively would take them coming onboard at some time into the future and then once they do come onboard, that we will have, be able to enforce this ordinance. This ordinance basically is a replicate of the existing ordinances that we currently have for RCH and for High Point, but it'll need some modification in terms of doing it with, it's being addressed. So again, I will have that for us next time and we'll be able to approve or disapprove that. So I do not make a motion for necessarily for approval this evening.
Anybody have any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I have a question, not necessarily on this item, but Ms. London brought up some issues about the legality of imposing a franchise fee on a water supply company. And I think it would be helpful for us to make that determination if that is in fact the case, or can we apply a franchise fee on a water supply company before we go down this road as a general matter?
As it pertains specifically to water supply corporations, that has never come up, so I'd have to look into that and I don't mind doing that. But just in general, cities can charge franchise fees because franchise fees, according to the Supreme Court of the United States, they're rent, in essence, they've called them rent, for the use of a city's rights of way. So we as a city, or even a general law city, has authorized to charge franchise fees for the use of the rights of way. Now, it's a little different in this case because you don't normally see them with, regardless of whether they're private or public, you just don't normally see them in the case of franchise fee ordinances, in the case of water at all. I mean, it's usually for your electricors, you point out the nodes, you know, stuff like that. That's typically generally normally where you see them. So that's not, this is not, this is a little unique in that aspect.
And another question I had on that, kind of a general one, is that we've got these specific ordinances that are applicable to particular entities. Is there any way that we can prepare an ordinance that's general to any of these sorts of utilities that would be self-executing to some degree with respect to the city administrator after a period of time? You know, that they can do the enforcement without having to go through something like this where it looks like, well, this entity's not doing it, but this one is, and just trying to give everybody a level playing field for the utilities?
So to your first question, no. The second question, it really already is self-enacting in terms of the enforcement. So.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Tucker, we did find the original Blackland ordinance that was prepared in '23 when the other two were prepared. So all I will need to do is update it with current dates if that's how you instruct me to move forward.
Mr. McLendon. Mr. Brewer. Mr. Day.
So again, on this, we can postpone this till next time, two weeks from now, and we'll have that in the packet so people can review it and we can go ahead and.
I would ask that if we also are doing that, Mr. Holla, if we can just double check per our conversation that we had today on this, there's just so many things that create issues here. One of the ones is, this could be something that could be challenged in court, which opens us up to another lawsuit, which we talked about today. It also puts us in a position of piecemealing this together because of, some of the roads are not covered by city. And so it puts us in positions where some neighborhoods will have to pay a franchise fee, some would not. When I spoke with all the water companies, Blackland, High Point, as well as RCH, we would be the only city imposing a franchise fee on them. Dallas, Fornie, Kaufman, Terrell, the ones that are under Blackland, don't impose a franchise fee on them. So I think it's going to probably open us up, along with the simple fact that when these ordinances were passed in '23, they were never, they were never acted upon. So it would also raise the argument of, we have never enforced the ordinance, which, I'm no attorney. We spoke a little bit about Latches today and Ultra, I can't remember how you said that, virus. I think these are things that if I'm RCH and High Point, they're looking at. And it just, it's just another thing that puts us in a situation, the city, in being sued again, when I would feel honestly, if you want to do this the right way, then we should be removing these items as the Mayor Pro Tim wants to do. But the next agenda item on March 11th should be repealing these and then we start over from scratch and do it the right way. Because if you've never enforced it, and I have found the email chain that shows when this was all started by the last outgoing mayor and Mayor Pro Tim, as well as the last city administrator, and they never enforced it. They sent it out, High Point, they gave High Point the opportunity. High Point, they gave High Point the opportunity to revise it, and when they did that, they also gave, uh, RCH the same consideration. Which, when you do that, you now open up the Ultraviruses, because of, when we, when High Point was granted, the, uh, change did come back to council for approval. No, it did not. So, we never got to see the change that they did. So, I would advise the council, this is something you truly want to pursue. My advice, repeal it, March 11th, and start over. Because I think you're going to open yourselves up to another lawsuit yet again. But, that is your vote. Sounds like this one's been removed, so we'll go to, uh, 7.2, Angela.
So, on 7.2, this is just, uh, we recently were able to negotiate, uh, impact fees for roads with our, with, uh, the Sonoma Verde project.
Angela, did you read this?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Angela, I need you to read it. We'll make a motion in a second, please.
Discuss and consider action on directing staff to seek vendor RFQ in pursuit of the future sewer impact fee report and schedule.
I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tim?
So, that being said, um, again, we recently went through a, uh, some work with Sonoma Verde developers, uh, and went back and forth on utilizing our, our road impact fees, uh, and, and, and were able to negotiate on, on that point, and to some degree, saved the city some money. Uh, the project with the road impact fees started about, I think about 15 months ago, and it was a long effort to get those instituted. Uh, lengthy study by Kimberly Horn, if I recall, and we finally brought this to fruition and voted on it, and, and, and now we have impact fees at least for, for the streets. Now, I'm just going back and trying to replicate this process, and at least get it started. Certainly won't be finished on my watch, but I think that it can be carried forward by, uh, the new council. And, uh, I, I think it's propitious for us to start looking at impact fees associated with sewer, if it's applicable. And so, looking for a vendor, it may very well be Kimberly Horn or somebody else. But, I think we need to start the process, and we'd like to see approval for this.
Beth, I want to ask you on this one. I know we had spoke about this, is, is this the one that you were going to be meeting with the city manager at Rockwall on?
Yes, sir. We actually spoke to the city secretary in Heath and got their impact fees, just so we would have kind of a basis. And then I inquired of Ms. Smith, what Rockwall does, and she told me, and she also granted me a meeting on Friday to come and learn more about this. So, when we do the RFQ, we will be asking for everything correctly.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Easter?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it seems reasonable to start exploring the future sewer impact fees and trying to get an idea of what those might be, and what evaluation, coupled with the numbers of the homes that are envisioned. So, I think starting sooner rather than later is probably a reasonable measure to consider.
Councilmember McClendon? Councilmember Brewer?
Do we know when the last time we did a study on impact fees, on sewer impact fees?
To my knowledge, never. We only charge a sewer taffy at this point, and we did check with Heath and Rockwall to make sure that they are charging both, and they indeed are.
Councilmember Day?
Beth, I'm very interested in finding out what the results of your meetings are going to be. Would you, uh, mind getting the copies of the reports that they have that establish their fees, as well as establishing the dates for when those reports were done, and the research that was behind them, and make them available to the council?
I will get everything they are willing to share.
Thank you. Well, if, if they're not willing to share it, we'll file a Public Information Act request, and we'll get it that way.
Mayor Pro Tim, is there anything else on that? Okay, we've had the motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, show that one unanimous, and that will take us to item 7.3, Angela.
Discuss and consider approval to instruct city administrator to forward a letter of notification to RCH WSC and High Point SUD designation each, design, designation each in violation of ordinance 2023-5, which is RCH, and ordinance 2023-6, which is High Point, respectively, requiring a 30-day notice to reply prior to, uh, to pursuing further action.
Will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion discussing, consider approval to instruct city administrator to forward a letter of notification, RCH, and High Point SUD, each in violation of ordinances, respectfully requiring a 30-day notice to reply to prior to pursuing further action. So...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tim?
So, on this, I mean, it follows on the heels of 7.1, obviously, to some degree. Uh, these, uh, ordinances were passed back in August of '23, and both entities have been informed in the past that, uh, they have not paid these franchise fees, and, uh, they've been put on notice several times. Uh, they're well aware of, uh, these ordinances, and, and they're participants in, when the city confines in terms of delivery of their water, and they generate revenues, and, you know, the courts have found that franchise fees can be applied. Not necessar-, there seems to be something in question in terms of water. And so, my ask will be, at this point, to get some definition as to whether or not, uh, truly we can collect franchise fees based on, uh, public utilities that involve water delivery. So, we'll have to have that between now and then. But, I'd like to go forward and issue the letters, uh, irrespective of that. In the interim, we can pursue this, and it turns out to be that we can't enforce those ordinances, and so be it.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker, I was instructed by the mayor last Friday to write these letters and mail them. You have them in your packets. They were mailed on, uh, February 21st to, uh, Mr. Washburn and to, uh, Mr. Naylor.
Okay. And, and I appreciate, uh, the copy. Um, it was well-written and very informative. It should have been addressed to RCH instead of personalizing it.
Thank, thank Mr. Holla for the letter.
Oh, I didn't recognize his, his fingerprint on this. That being said, if that's been, been done, then, uh, I welcome it. Um, and it's been done, so there needs no action on this at this point, if it's been sent. Thank you, Mr. Holla. Thank you, Beth.
Mr. Easter?
Well, if it's been sent, I think it's a little bit late to do anything about it. But, to, I think, Mayor Pro Tim's point, to trying to make sure we understand what the parameters are as far as seeking a franchise fee from these sorts of entities, you know, I'd like just to make sure that we're, we're within our purview to do that. That's all.
Mr. McClendon? Mr. Brewer?
I agree with what Mr. Easter said.
Mr. Day?
Yeah, so, uh, this is, uh, I don't really want to say a whole lot about it right now, because I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to kind of metabolize what, what it is that's going on. So, the, the letter was already sent out pursuant to what was commented on in item 7.1, with respect to Mr. Easter's comments about having a general ordinance, where enforcement could come directly from the administrator, rather than having it come across the city council. It's kind of, uh, an interesting approach to this, and it would be good to see if something like that could ever be hashed out. I'm interested in finding out if there's an opinion that could be rendered on these water service corporations, whether or not they are subject to these types of fees, and if so, they need to pay it. Uh, if not, then it's, it's moot, right? It's moot at that point, so. Uh, but, uh, I'm glad this thing was out, I guess. You know, we don't even have to take action on it, it's just done.
So, just real quick, the reason we sent the letter, and I asked for the letter to be sent, is because it's a staff issue. It shouldn't, it shouldn't even have been on the agenda. It should have been just us letting the staff know, hey, can you send the letter? Because the staff's responsible for enforcing the ordinances, council's responsible for creating them. Um, the first email that ever went out on these was right after this was passed, um, it was passed in August of '23. The first email went to, uh, David Naylor from the city administrator, and letting him know, and at that point, David Naylor had said, well, hey, we understand, High Point had changed it, so we would like the same. That was now October 5th, so, September, October, so two months after the ordinance had been passed. Uh, Conrad responded four days later and gave him a version to edit. So, when he edited it, we have the original version that was sent to Mr. Naylor, and then he sent back an edited version to correct, nothing bad, just like where it says, spells it out legally correct, Water Supply Corporation, you know, kind of just defined stuff, but it doesn't, it actually doesn't challenge the ordinance, it just says, hey, please connect, correct these things. Then, nothing happened until April the 5th of '24, months later. Um, the Conrad said, hey, we need to, we would like to start to implement the franchise fee. Thank you for your compliance. And Naylor said, well, I can come and speak at a city council meeting, and then again, nothing happened. And that was in April of '24, until we brought it up again here in '25. It's just, I'm still going to say, you, when, I think y'all should probably do some research. Uh, I'm not an attorney, so I would probably look at some of these things with the lashes and the Ultraviruses, or however that's said, that could pertain to some of this stuff. There's just a lot in things in here. If a city fails to enforce an ordinance over time, and it allows entities such as developers, businesses, or other third parties to redline and change it without following proper legal procedures, the ordinance enforceability can be challenged on several grounds. Um, if, if the city has neglected to enforce an ordinance for an extended period, a legal principle called lashes may apply. This means a court could determine that the city effectively waived its right to enforce the ordinance due to inaction. Again, it's not up to me to decide, not up to even our legal counsel to decide. It would fall on a judge, because I can assure you, these two water companies would probably challenge this, and rightly so. We didn't do nothing for two years. If y'all want to do this, I have said this many times, just do it the right way. Repeal it, and then just reissue it. And then you have the enforcement on a new ordinance. But, you're going to try to enforce something that's never been enforced, it's going to get challenged, you're going to open us up to another lawsuit. It'll be your vote. Apparently, this is going to get punted to 311 as well, but that's my recommendation. Or, guess what? We'll get another lawsuit, and we'll pay again. That one's been punted, apparently, so 7.4 will also be punted to 311 because of the, uh, Jeff being out with his daughter in the hospital. Um, so, he was going to present that, so he will present that on 311, which brings us to 7.5, Angela.
Discuss and consider the distribution of Rockwall County Child Safety Funds.
I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Beth?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is going to be the fun part of our job tonight. The Rockwall County collects $1.50 from each vehicle tag issuance within the calendar year, and it is called a child safety fee. That fee is then divided among the municipalities in the unincorporated area in the county to be shared with child-based nonprofits. The county chose for 2024, actually, our total was $5,247.26 that we have received from the county already. It is in our bank account. The county chose to share their funds with three charities, Rainbow Room, Children's Advocacy Center, and Boys and Girls Club. We have the option to pick who we want to share the funds with. We do not have to go with the county's choices. So, in looking up additional options in Rockwall County that serve children, is Helping Hands and Women in Need, along with Rainbow Room, Children's Advocacy Center, and Boys and Girls Club. If you decide to give it to one charity, it is the $5,247.26. If you decide to split it among two, it is $2,623.63. Three, 174908. Four, 131181. Or all five, 1,04945.
Thank you. Mr. Easter?
Yeah, I, I'm not that familiar with each and every one of these, and so, I'm tending to feel that it would be appropriate to evenly distribute it amongst all of them, just for lack of knowledge of the particulars.
Mr. McClendon? Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I think they're all great charities. I, I know some about the Children's Advocacy Center. I served on the board in Lubbock. Um, they do great work. They do forensic interviews, as well as, uh, mental health follow-up for victims of, uh, sexual and physical abuse. Um, you know, they're truly, they, they do God's work. And so, anyway, I'm supportive of, of all this, so.
Mr. Day?
Yeah, I'm not nearly as familiar with these as I probably should be. I, I'm familiar with several charities that are nationwide charities. Some of these are, and some of these are, um, you know, I, I have a soft heart for especially the kids who are dealing with terminal diseases. And if it was up to me, I would put it all on that. Um, but I don't know which one of these organizations really is in that sandbox.
With it having to be a Rockwall County nonprofit, I don't believe we have one that focuses on childhood diseases like a St. Jude's or a Scottish Rite, some of those.
Well, frequently, that what they'll do is they'll provide food, blankets, something like the family support for kids that are receiving treatment, whether it be leukemia or, or some of these other horrible diseases, yeah.
Yeah, and I can honestly say, I do not think any of these five do that.
Okay, I, I'll go with the recommendation of splitting it evenly, just like Mr. Easter.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very knowledgeable about all of these entities. My wife works intimately with virtually all these, uh, organizations. She knows the individual staff for virtually all of them, so, uh, I, I would, there's, I, I can't differentiate one from the other when it comes to, you know, making a donation. Uh, so, based on that, I would, I would split these monies up and do it, uh, for each.
Alright, well, let's make a motion to distribute it evenly, and then we'll, uh, sounds like we'll approve that. So, someone can make that motion to distribute to all five evenly, please.
I'll make a motion to spread it evenly between all of the charities.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Well, thank you for the meeting. That takes us to, uh, updates, discussion, and direction to staff. Mr. Easter, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. McClendon? Mr. Brewer?
Uh, yeah, just on the Home Rule Charter, we're, uh, it is on the ballot, and, uh, thank you, council. Um, we are having our first town hall on it this coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. We'll have another one, uh, Wednes-, the following Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. I think that's the 5th. And then, uh, a week later, we'll have it on Thursday, the 13th, at, uh, 6:00 p.m. Um, we'll have some more, we'll wait till after spring break is over with, and by that time, we should have, start mailing out the charters to all the registered voters within the city. Uh, so, we'll plan on having quite a few, uh, in the first part of April up through till, just before early voting starts.
Mr. Day? Mr. Tucker? I'll close with me. I just wanted to give a quick update. Uh, oh, go ahead, Beth, I'm sorry.
That's alright, you guys. Always forget me over here. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that the citizens, the survey that went out to all the residents, we did extend the deadline to 3/1/25. So, please encourage all of your friends and neighbors who friends and neighbors who have not responded to respond. We have right at 200 responses to date. And then, it is with some sadness that I have some news to share with y'all. Our city planner, Asa Woodbury, has given his notice, and he will be leaving us on March 21st. So we want to wish him well in his new endeavors. He has learned a lot while he's been here, and he has, he's done a good job for us, so please wish him well.
Thanks, Bev. So I'll close. One of the things I wanted to make sure people know is, myself and the area mayors in the county, as well as the county judge and commissioners, have been really diving in to be one united front to go down to Austin to speak with the legislations down there with the representatives, as well as the senators, and each of us has taken on different roles in how we are trying to maintain local government control, but also addressing a bunch of other issues. And so I just wanted everyone to know that we have been able to make some headway, some of the state senators have sent us stuff back, asking us to redline some things that, you know, before it goes to those committee hearings. I know mayor billings from fate is going to be driving down to, you know, day drives just for hearings, we'll go down, speak, and then come back home. I'm not on any of those, I've done my part, I'm finishing up one more letter that is, I was asked to write, and I got some good help from some people that I appreciate, and so we're, hopefully, we'll be signing that letter as a whole unified front, all the mayors and the county judge. So it's just been fun to go down there and actually advocate and fight for McLennan-Chisholm residents the right way, and it's just been a pleasure, and I appreciate everybody who has sent me ideas, support, and just things they wanted me to go and ask about, so thank you for that. There's nothing to go into executive session for, so at 7:31, we are adjourned. Thank you.